Okay, it is 6:00 PM on Monday, November 8th, 2021. We are in the boardroom of the Harlan Community High School for the Board of Directors Regular Meeting. The first item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order and determine a quorum. We do have a quorum. Second item on the agenda is public forum, and I don't believe that anybody asked to speak. So we do not have a public forum this evening. Third item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved by Johnny.
Sorry.
Second by Al. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is our discussion items. The first is the Administrator Report.
Okay. I'm just gonna hand this over, but we decided that instead of having the administrators write specifically a report to you and share it out, that we would share out some student accolades each month. So Jeff, do you want to start with your elementarys?
Yeah. Well, we have what's called Citizen of the Week every week. Those of you that have kids come through school probably have heard this or even had kids of your own. But basically, every week, we, teachers can nominate students that are showing great citizenship. And we have so many kids that could get this award, so it's above and beyond the Call of Duty. It might be for a specific reason, you know, they, I don't know, on their own helped somebody do something, or did a project on their own, or it could just be how they are daily interaction in the class. So I thought we would just, you know, we've got six students, I think six, seven students already this, man, the weeks are going by fast. Seven students who have been selected as our Citizen of the Week, and they are, I feel old because I wear glasses now. Charlotte Patee, Rex Swanson, and you can see their pictures up there. Julia Heslink, Winter Thurman, Kellen Baughman, back there in the middle, Bella Roloff, and I think that's one more. Maddie Peterson.
And Maddie Peterson is the 5th grade Opus Choir.
Oh, that's right. Maddie, yeah, she was the Opus Choir student.
Yep. So we, and then tomorrow night is concert.
Yep, tomorrow night, we have 4th grade concert at 6:00 and 5th grade at 7:15.
Is that a Veterans Day concert, or 5th grade?
It'll have that flavor. Yes, 5th grade for sure. And then we have our actual program on Thursday at 1 o'clock, if anybody's interested in coming over. So that'll be in the gym for when the veterans actually come, so, yeah.
That's at 1:00 you said, Jeff?
1 o'clock.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, Bill, they got middle school there?
Yeah, these are students of the quarter. Each teacher core area nominates a student of their choice based off of four criteria. One is quality of work, but then two, attitude in the classroom, how they treat others in the classroom, and to the point where who's working up to their potential on a regular basis. So it could be getting a student that's getting an A, could be getting a student that's getting a C, but just is working to the best of their potential. So those students, there was 18 of them. Aubrey Artfield, Carson Baughman, Sadie Boji, Cole Kesters, Henry Shaven, Janice Smith, Valen Fahn, Sadie Alberti, Kensley Brook, Elijah Cox, Kobe Clausen, Avery Mans, Sophia Geraldo, Lily Kimble, Bartolo Perez, Levi Schekinger, Bailey Smith, and Carly Tornaton. So we have lunch with those students then, and talk to them about citizenship, talk about being a good student and the expectations that we have for them. Some of them think that they're not doing anything special, it's just, you know, who they are and stuff. And then we just kind of then go around the room and talk about things that they like about school, and maybe some things that they give us some input in terms of what we can maybe do differently at school, so.
Anything else you want to share about middle school?
We got a concert coming up here again. Also, we already had one a couple of weeks ago, so we'll have another one coming up. We had some students, and I'm not sure if they've been notified or not, that made All Southwest Iowa Honor Band. So I'll give that information to Mrs. Barnett, she can disperse it to you, otherwise I don't need to beat Mr. Paulson to the punch and get that announcement out. So that was very good. He was very happy with the representation there, so, yeah.
I heard there were several of them, I think.
Yeah, I think there was like 11, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Scott?
This is our girls' cross-country team, ready to play 7th as a team, and Kayla Baker got 7th overall. Great season. And then this is our All-State Vogel people. We have Rebecca Bruck, which is a four-timer, she's been All-State four years, and we got Caden Milton, he was a three-time All-Stater, and Seth Anderson, this is his first year being All-State. We have a National Merit, if you go down a little bit. We have Ellie Gross, which is commended. What that is, there's about 50,000 people that, 50,000 students that apply for this honor to be a National Merit Scholar Program, and it's a pretty extensive program to get through, or the application, and to be in the top 50,000 is pretty special. She's in the commended category, which there's the top six, she's within the top, 2/3 of the 50, there's 16,000 people still left, which the 8,000 of those will be in the semifinals, they'll go to the semifinals, then the finals, but she is in the top 50,000, so she's represented Harlan Community very well. We have Aurora Miller and Elena Viscotti, I can't say her name, just lost it. For check.
Ratchadike.
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 Elena Ratchadike and Aurora Miller. Elena is gonna swim freestyle at the state meet, and Aurora's gonna swim breaststroke in both in the same relay, so.
And when is, yeah, when is state date?
That is this Friday. They swim this Friday. And then the Vogelists, they will perform on November 20th at Hilton Coliseum.
And then we're expecting to have the big picture of the football, but we don't want to take our carpet, of course. Football team, Saturday.
I like the pictures, that's, yeah.
Yeah, this is a great thing.
That's a neat way to do it.
We just thought we'd get some students up there.
Good job. I like it.
Okay. Board President News.
Did you have anything else for the minute?
Do you want me to do my student first, or do you want to?
Yeah, oh, no.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Board President News. Just a few things. Last Monday, Jenny was a member of a panel at the Iowa Best Conference on School-Based Mental Health, and her topic was mental health services in rural areas and how to improve them. She stated that her experience was wonderful. Jenny was asked after the discussion to be a member of the University of Iowa School-Based Therapy Advisory Board. I want to congratulate her and let her know how proud this board is of her for all of her accomplishments in the very short time here at Harlan Community. You're knowledgeable, confident, and resourceful, and we are proud to have you representing our district. Thank you. Next, I would like to congratulate Jade Albertson, Greg Blatt, and Jim Reichel on being elected to the Harlan Community School Board, and Al Hazelton and Joe Hersberg on your reelection to the board. Your role as a board member begins now with the official swearing-in of the new members to take place at the December meeting. Our most important role on this board is to always do what's best for kids. I also want to thank Jessica Anderson, and Seth isn't here yet, for serving on the Harlan Community School Board. Their knowledge and support of this district will be missed. Okay, now, I'd like to take time to have a brief discussion on the eight traits of the effective school board that we talked about last time. So at the last meeting, we read through the document that contains the eight traits and some danger signs, and I asked each board member to come back today with a trait that they feel our board excels at, and one that they feel that our board could improve upon. So the trait that I feel that the Harlan Community School Board excels at is setting high expectations and clear goals. I feel that the board has done a great job over the past several years setting clear goals that align with the high academic expectations of the district. What I think that Harlan Community School Board could improve on, collaboration and communication. Over the past few months, I think the school board has heard that we need to be more transparent. I think that it is important that we continue to have good discussions at the board table and stating our intentions clearly. When not at the board table, it is the responsibility of a board member to gain information, knowledge, and understanding by asking questions internally in order to speak accurately about the district. It is extremely important to remember that as board members, we are representing the board and speaking for the board. We are not representing ourselves or speaking for ourselves. Anybody want to go next?
I'll go next. I thought that we do, the one I thought we did well, high expectations, clear goals. I believe we do a good job setting high expectations and clear goals. We have really improved our process of setting district goals, and I believe have made them very straightforward. I'd like to recognize the leadership Seth brought to the board on that front. He really helped us articulate our goals in a way that is measurable and actionable. I think that is important to continue going forward. To improve upon, number five, being data savvy. I think while we are getting better at using data, we need to make sure we, the board, are continually asking for that data as we make decisions. This will be particularly important as we move into facility improvement decisions.
Go around, skip.
Sure. Sounds good.
I felt like it was really hard to pick out one to really say we do better than others. I think that, my favorite one, though, is still the, is the one that believes that all children can learn. I think we do pretty well at that, and it's been a longstanding thing around this table and among our administration. I remember many years ago, asking the question, you know, trying to figure out this proficiency thing, and really getting the clear message from our administrative team of that, really, every child can become proficient. And I really have come around to believe that, and I think that, I think we do a pretty good job of encouraging every child. And it's, it's more difficult for some, and I think we do pretty well at encouraging those that were, that really struggled. So I like that. Trying to find something that we could improve upon, I guess I would have to, I would, I would like to have a better understanding, I don't know, it's not better, because I think that the, people understand it, but I, the, where we are on the student achievement, it's so hard right now because, because the rules have changed, or the tests have changed, and it's so hard for our administrative team to, it seems like, to be able to say where we actually are, because there's not really things to compare it with like they'd like it to be. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, going forward, have that really clarified, and I think it's gonna get better as time goes on, and we get some assessments that everybody kind of understands better. And I think you guys understand a lot more than I do, I know, but it's trying, it's a difficult thing for you to try to explain to us sometimes, when you haven't got any last year data, or two years of data to go with, so, anyway, that's fine.
Okay. There's not a right or wrong answer here.
Oh.
And so, coming from the technology world, I guess I, I know Jessica and Al just picked on data savvy as being something we need to work on a little bit more, but I feel when we do have data from administrators, we have used it in a positive way, you know, we use this information to help identify specific student needs, and, you know, hopefully this data would help all of us justify decisions we make. And maybe I picked that just so we continue to maybe focus on that a little bit more going forward, so. I talk about technology world, and I can't figure out my smartphone here. The one, one thing I think we, we need to do a little bit better job is team training, and or think of it as maybe team development. You know, I think myself, when I first got elected to the school board, I feel I didn't get a whole lot of team training and or development. I think that's really important, especially to the new board elects that we have here. Also, it'd be a great refresher for us, those of us that have been on the board, just maybe make sure we understand the finances, but everything that goes, that is involved in being on the school board, so, that's why I have.
For me, the, the team training is one that, it kind of concerned me also, just, and I assumed a lot of that was because I came midterm, so there wasn't an opportunity for me to go through the regular routine everybody else had. And it's a steep learning curve, which kind of takes me, I just want to say, the people that are leaving, we are losing a whole lot of knowledge base that I am going to miss, and I'm very glad for the time I've had with you guys. The, the place that we do well, I think, I went with high expectations and belief that all children can learn, because we, we seem to do well on both of those pretty equally, in my opinion.
Okay. Go ahead, Johnny.
It's his turn.
I'm gonna go kind of the, we that all children can learn, and the goals. I'm confident that we, the board members who we sit at this table, we always put the students first, and I think that's important, that the board keeps doing that. That's our job, to help our children be educated the best they can be, no matter what. And that goes along with the goals. I think the board has had some very good goals lately, and I hope to see that continue. And I think working with Dr. Barnett and the administrative team, we just need to keep those common goals and work hard for them. Team training, I think that that is going to be extremely important going forward, just because of the new members, and like we all know, this is a huge learning curve, and it takes, it takes time to get everything figured out. I think Al and I, Monty, we're still learning.
Absolutely, all the time, right?
And Amy, you thanked everyone else on the board, and I wanted to thank you. Thank you for all the time that you've given and dedicated to this board.
Thank you. Seth, we're going over the eight traits. If you wanted to say what you felt we kind of did a good job at, and maybe what we could improve on.
Yeah, well, that's a hard act to follow. I think you hit on, just for the, sorry, thank you for letting me be late. Yeah, the one that stood out, I guess, is that team training, because the learning curve is super steep, and there's a lot of intricacies there, and so, yeah, I would just encourage that. Certainly, the, the high expectations, clear goals, I think that, you know, anchors everybody to that, and as long as everybody has a deep understanding of those goals, that'll help continue to drive the work forward. And I think that focus on achievement, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, and I think having the clear goals and the focus on achievement anchored can just, again, keep the focus where it needs to be. And what we continue to hear, when I first joined the board, it was loud and clear, through the election, it was loud and clear, just collaboration and communication, just continuing to, encouragement to continue to find ways to get input, create that two-way communication, and make sure that when decisions are made, that the rationale and what implementation and follow-up looks like is an important part of that communication. So I'll just emphasize that, that fourth one there.
Awesome, thank you. So I heard lots of the team training, that, you know, might be an area of concern. So, you know, the eight traits of the effective school boards came from Harry at IASV, and he has retired, and I thought that Tammy was going to come out and do the training in January, but she has something else already on her calendar for that day. So Luann, do you know her at all?
Yeah.
She is coming out on, how do you say?
Gvist?
Yes.
Yeah.
GVIST.
Yeah.
So she will be coming out on Monday, January 24th, I believe that's the date.
Yes, yes.
At 6:00.
6:00 to 8:00.
And she is, you know, at IASV, and she will do a wonderful job. She kind of asked what we wanted in the training, and I said, I think just, you know, the, just the general.
Start with the basics.
Mm-hmm. So I think it will be at least a 90-minute training, possibly two hours. So that is something, but I, I hope for, and it is something we haven't had for a long time, so I hope it's something that you find very beneficial.
In here, or?
I, I, yeah, we can.
Okay.
We gotta set up for 6 o'clock, right?
Yes.
6:00.
Okay.
She's really in charge of the whole convention that will be at next week, so you'll get to see her abilities there.
Very nice, very knowledgeable. She seems very eager to help everybody get off on the right foot, and so I would encourage everybody to put it on their calendars.
I looked at the IASV, the PDF on the eight traits, it's like 17 pages, but it is very inspiring. There's a lot that can be done. Really neat.
I think she'll do a great job. And then we also talked about possibly, this doesn't have anything to do with her, but maybe some financial training.
Oh, just the finance, yeah, school finance.
Moving forward, yeah, maybe after, after that.
You're close. So you don't need double.
Okay.
Speaking of IASV, is that farther down the agenda, or?
No.
Is there any update on who's going, or? I'm sorry.
Do you, Catherine, I mean, we, we know, we just registered everybody today.
Okay.
And, yep, and so I think, do you want to know who's?
No, no, I just, I didn't know if that was part of the, yeah, I just didn't know.
Yep, we've got everybody registered.
It is a huge learning experience, so if you, new board members, if you, if you can make it work in any way, shape, or form, I would encourage you to do that, because there's, there's so much to offer, and it's, and it's good bonding for the board.
Good networking.
As well.
Next discussion item is the Superintendent Report. Okay, we have lots of guests today, but we have one special guest, and I'm gonna let him introduce himself and his dad, and tell his wife he's here.
I'm Logan, with the Boy Scouts. I am here for a communications merit badge.
Carl Martin, his father, one of the Assistant Scout Masters with Troop 90 here in town, so just kind of getting some things rolling again with the troop and everything, so finishing up a couple of merit badges and hoping to get his first-class rank here in the next couple of months.
Awesome. So was attending a school board meeting one of your options to get the?
For the communications.
Uh-huh. Logan, what's your last name?
Martin.
What grade are you in?
8.
Well, welcome. It's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
I think this is a nice big meeting for you.
Usually, it's just us sitting at the table.
This is a full house.
This is a, yes. So I, I'm excited that we have three different guests in here, so there's lots of people, but we'll start with Conductix, and we have, well, first, Matt, and Matt Bunballa and Mr. Kinkle are here representing the foundation, and we just appreciate that the foundation donated quite a bit of money to our welding, welding project, as well as Conductix, and I'm gonna let Kyle Funk and Josh Smith take over and show you all the great things they've done.
Just got a quick PowerPoint. Reminders.
She is her old one.
That'd be quite the trick.
She is her old one, that she gave it to me, and I'm still trying to figure out how to shut things off.
I'm supposed to get arrows sometimes.
Good thing you donate a bunch of technology.
There, I know. Silent mode. You should leave it home next time.
Chuck it.
Chuck it.
Well, this, we'll go next. We'll go to Iowa Western, so I want to introduce Lori Stitz, and Lori's here, and just want to thank her and let her talk a little bit about the partnership with Iowa Western. Thank you.
Tom Gilmore, our Dean of High School Outreach, was actually supposed to be here this evening too, but he was under the weather, and so sorry that he could not be here. We've had a lot of great meetings recently, and I'm not sure, you know, in the room, who has heard of the wonderful things that are happening, but lots of future partnership going on. Iowa Western Community College, if any of you, you know, are familiar with the building that we're in, we are probably in the last few steps of moving into the north end of the building, or Farm Table Delivery is at, and so we will be gaining that space probably after the first of the year, with the plan to bring in some additional career technical education programs. We've had industrial technology in the building for the last three years, and it has grown from six to eight, to now 15 students. Last year at the awards bank, what I was able to give out, eight awards for earning their certificates in industrial technology, and two of those students went on to Iowa Western to continue their education, and several, several of the others went other places too. And we've had great success with those students. When you talk to the parents, you know, the, the programs are going through, and the things they're learning are just awesome, and so we look forward to more meetings. Those are constant. We hope to bring some businesses together on a sector board, because we want to learn more about what kind of skills that we want our students learning, and then not only for Harlan, but, you know, Elkhorn School District of Boca, we hope to bring them into kind of an academy setting, bring more programs into the building. I'm hearing a lot about maybe some auto diesel. We've had a little bit talk about maybe some welding, HVAC. I mean, we don't know yet, those decisions haven't been made, but that's why we want to bring, you know, a sector board, you know, together of business people. It's a great economic development thing, it's a win-win for the schools, it's a win for the businesses in the area. We want to grow our local talent, it's a workforce issue. We want them to get the skills, and maybe stay here and work for some of the businesses we have. You know, something our industrial technology students do is they go tour our businesses, and it's amazing, they had no idea what was happening inside those buildings, and it's great. And then they're coming back and learning skills, and then maybe, you know, they will stay and work for some of these businesses. And so, we've talked a little bit about CNA, you know, there's CNA training going on, you know, here in the building. We're talking maybe about moving that down to the building so we can take advantage of our great nursing facilities, you know, we've got the LPN program at Iowa Western here in town, so we've got, you know, the beds, the mannequins, the whole bit, and so that can only enhance the CNA training too, so there's been some discussion around that. No decisions, but lots of discussion, lots of great things to come. I'm excited. I know as we meet, when we come up here and, and meet with the administrators, you know, they're excited. You know, we want to take it all the way down, you know, middle school, elementary, and start putting them on some career tracks, and bringing them, you know, all the way up through, and, and create some programs that are, that are, you know, there for all kids. Not everybody is, is college-bound, and, you know, we meet, we meet, and we meet, and we hear from the counselors, and so we need options for kids that are going off to the four-year universities, community college, trades, some just want to go to work, which is great, and some of the programs that we're gonna have out the college are gonna allow them to do just that. And so it's a little bit of something for everybody, I think, and I think that just benefits, benefits everybody. So real excited about what's to come, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Lori at all?
Thank you.
And we have Patrick Davis from De novo, and I don't know, Patrick, if you want to talk a little bit about what's next steps for us?
For sure, yeah. Welcome, everyone. Congratulations to the board members. As my colleague Brian, who's also a board member, says, the pay is fantastic. Yeah, so we are moving forward with the facility assessment and master plan, and so to this point, since we got the green light last month, we have our architecture and engineering teams on board. The next Monday, we'll be onsite, looking through everything, and getting all of those data points put together. Jenny and I, along with Chad from the Green Hills AEA, have been working together on a staff survey, and I'm really excited about this. It's a new delivery method for a survey that Jenny wants to use, and I think it's gonna be fantastic, and it's gonna be really interactive. interactive between the staff as they're making comments and other staff members can comment on it, so it'll be different for me and I think it'll be, it'll be really great to get good feedback. From that point, we'll move into staff visioning, so we'll take data that we got from the assessment and the survey and go into sessions, in-person sessions of I wish, I wish we had, I know we need, type of things like that. Moving into prioritization and the long-range planning, well, that's when kinda the rubber hits the road of where does the board need to go, where does the community wanna go, where do the students wanna go and a big portion of that is community engagement and town hall meetings with the outside communities, so not just Harlan, but everyone else around here, so those will be really cool to hear from everyone, get everyone's input as the process is moving down the road. And then we'll wrap up this process with a, uh, open house, a celebration event that'll take place in both of the facilities, but we want the community to come in, we want them to see improvements that have been happening over the last three years because there's a lot of really cool stuff such as the gym, really cool stuff like bathroom upgrades or even stuff, or even stuff that can't be seen such as updating controls, which is being done for your HVAC system. So, there's a lot of stuff that is seen, that isn't seen, but people don't come in, they may not see that from a day-to-day perspective like educators do, so letting them know that things have been, are being done and have been done and, uh, the board and everyone is taking care of the facilities really well is a very important thing to, to do and that is a point in, I guess I haven't been giving dates, sorry about that. So, the, um, I guess, this month, we're having a lot with the facility assessment and then the, um, the survey and then December, we'll be visioning, we have, we don't have a date yet for that and then the prioritization will be about three months, so that'll be January through, uh, March and then the open house event will happen at beginning of April sometime, so.
So, one of the reasons that we chose De novo, and Brian, please jump in, is just that the fact that they, they do things a little bit differently than just hiring an architect or firm and then they give you the plans and do it, De novo will help us do some long-range planning and planning out for ten years, so here's what we're gonna need now and here's what we may need, we may need in three and five and just helping us with the process of the communication because architects don't do that. So, just the surveys and, and they're doing a lot of the back work on the surveys and they'll be analyzing the data and, and maybe sending surveys out to the community as well. But just, it's just a, a new way of thinking of school, uh, school facility upgrades and,
Making sure that it aligns with funding that's coming in.
Exactly.
It's the right steps we're putting in place.
Right, so if you, anyone is interested in being on a facilities, uh, committee from the community, please let us know because we'd be happy to, happy to have you on, on there to help us because we need all kinds of input.
Yeah, because we'd like to have, you know, a couple board members a part of that and then people within the community that are really interested in helping push, not push, but give their, give their feedback and have a, a good voice.
We need to hear from everyone.
Yeah.
Anything else, Brian?
I think one of the keys is determining our highest priorities and, and how we can satisfy those priorities in a, in a doable fashion.
And this isn't so much for Patrick, but, but, um, maybe a question for Jenny or Brian or a point. Some folks have asked me, um, and it was suggested that, um, like cuts to staff positions or staff payroll may be necessary to address our facility needs. If we, and I'm, if we've riffed fully half our staff, which is obviously a gross exaggeration, just for an example, could we then take that money and the money that we saved and put it toward facilities?
I'll let Brian talk, just about that, there's just different plots.
In reality, the answer is yes, but in reality, you, you, I mean, you, you basically have nothing left at that point in time. You know, it's behind the screen here, but, um, the, anybody who got these handed out, what basically that tells you is there, there's, we have several different funds and, um, you know, if you look on the bottom, what you're typically gonna do is, in order to do buildings, equipment, facilities, you're gonna, you're gonna have to do those through either your P E P L fund, um, your penny fund and, and if need be, your debt, a debt service fund. With the P E P L, there's a lot of, I, I use, there's needs that we have to go on ongoing basis, buses and, and such, that sure, you could probably get some projects out of that, but it's, it's one that you couldn't fully commit to that type of project. Right now, as far as the penny, we are using that to satisfy all our debt needs at this point in time and it would be available for us at least somewhat going forward, but, you know, and, and Patrick, you could actually chime in here, you know, there, there are quite possibly things that need to be done that within the framework of what you're getting, you know, on an annual basis and the penny and the P E P L, that it's just not possible to do within that and that's where you would have to possibly, um, possibly would have to have something of a debt service.
But we wouldn't lay off staff members and then be able to take the money saved from that?
No.
And same with taking away academic programs or extracurriculars?
No.
That money can't be used?
I, 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 I can't fully say it can't because theoretically, you can pay for an awful lot of stuffs out of the general fund, but you're not gonna have anything left to educate your kids about.
So, it'd be very unwise. It'd be very unwise to go over.
Very unwise, it's, that's cutting off your, that's cutting off your finger to.
Districts would rarely do that, ever.
Spite your hand.
Yeah, right.
Well, our stated position has always been to keep any, um, changes like that or cuts like that as far away from the classroom as, as possible, so.
So, so I'm careful in answering Andrew's guess, would it be wise to do that? No, you're, you, um, you're cutting people and programs, um, you might not have any need for a facility at some point in time if you do that.
I just didn't want people to think that that was, that was a direction we were headed.
No, it's not, that would, that, that would be the last of the directions we would use. Jessica?
Okay, thank you.
Amy, you were talking about having a school finance session possibly? This is.
Yes.
This is why we.
And, and we did meet and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that in a little bit.
Okay.
But yes, definitely. This is something nice to keep board members just to reference.
There's a four-foot Persian behind the street.
Which isn't big enough some days.
Okay, yeah, let's try it.
Do you have any suggestions for us? Okay. Definitely. Look at that, there we go.
I keep your business control in Germany, very stringent on what they went through. All right, so we've been working with Mr. Frollick and, uh, getting, uh, the shops updated, that's quite a bit. Uh, I didn't have any really good pictures before, so I just kinda used the, uh, the slides from the previous FFA welding competition that we had judged, so that's kinda where we were at before. Uh, so we worked with the engineering department, uh, the manufacturing engineering, engineering department and came up with some ideas, we, we bounced off of, uh, Mr. White and Scott and we got to work and we started updating things, um, implementing, uh, some new, new safety curtains for the, the weld stations, uh, some paint, if I'm missing anything, feel free to jump in, Kyle, we'll get to some other pictures in a little. So, I came in today because we got a little bit further since the last photo, luckily everybody was welding today, um, we added some reels to the ceiling, um, kinda updated some of the electrical. We did the, the design in-house for the weld stations with, uh, some of Mr. White, Kenny White's ideas, um, what he wanted to see in the shop. Those are, back up one slide if you would, those are the stands at which the students, just hit your back here. Those are the stands that are in the vertical welding booths that they have a work table right in front of them, so it's adjustable for different heights. The key there is, is that it's easy to keep it clean, we manufacture that right here in town at our facility. Projects like this down the road with some collaboration, that'd be great projects for the students, learn how to do this stuff on, on your own. Mr. White wanted to be able to teach the kids how to weld overhead, so those will go all the way up and rotate and he'll be able to cover all those bases there. Uh, we did work with our Omaha facility and. This is our CNC laser, we cut some of the parts for the weld stations on CNC laser. This video is of different parts that we actually make for production, um, it's cutting three-eighth stainless steel right now, so you can see how fast it will, will go through that. But the designs we made in Harlan, we're able to just send over to Omaha and the next day, we have parts ready to build, so. Some of the parts we designed for the weld stations, we 3D printed in Harlan, at Conductix facility. Some of the parts we couldn't buy, so we just decided to make them. Does everybody here know what 3D printing is? So, this is our 3D printer, it's very small, um, they get it much larger, um, but it's, it's something that's easy technology to work with, um, we designed it, sent it over to the printer and it fills in the blanks for us. Our plan is in 2022 or possibly 2023 is to replace this piece of equipment, it's still in very good condition, it doesn't have a lot of hours on it, so we're gonna donate that to the high school here, um, once we're through with that and we'll give you training and show you how to run it and get the materials going and things like that, so. A lot of the students probably know more about it than some of us do. Yeah, it's an easy download on the software, nothing, no investment really for it, other than the consumables, plastics that you use to print with. And this slide is just some of the, some of the breakdown of, of what we've done this year. There's a lot of materials that go into the setup of the shop, um, all these materials were manufactured or taken off of our shelves, um, so we'll talk more about the collaboration later on in the slides, but the net is forty-three K, some of the, some of those dollars are list price for products that we have, so if a customer were to walk in out the street and they're not an established customer, no discount system set up, that's what they'd pay for that. And then we also invested about two hundred person hours into this project amongst four or five different people in the organization, there's a lot of collaboration between Scott, Kenny, um, Springman Electric was there at least eight times, he came out, helped us out with it, um, Conductix picked up that tattoo just to keep it clean, um, the high school and the foundation group actually paid for the paint job and they're, it looks really nice and made a huge difference on lighting. But it doesn't take long to rack up thirty, forty grand, so money well spent, very exciting. Here's some recommendations that we have moving forward, just to chew on from a foundation and a board standpoint. The current electrical bus bar was put in somewhere in the nineteen fifties, if I remember right, I think Scott told me, the building was built in the fifties. Seventies, okay, um, pre, pre my time, um, but anyway, the bar, the bus bar overhead, that powers, the welders, the lights, the fans, things like that, it's been outgrown, so it's time to replace that, um, in our opinion, as a proposal, maybe something you budget for next year, um, we have no idea what it's gonna cost, um, I would get a certified electrician in and do an estimate and then possibly do that over the summer. It's not bad the way it is, it's been like that for a very long time, but it's time to upgrade that to meet code, um, and to keep the students, you know, safe. We've, I, I don't have any safety concerns, the reels that we installed, they have GFCI units on them, so if, if there's a fault or something like that, the reel is protected, it can't continue to draw power, um, but it's really not perfect and that's something that should be considered. Another thing is, and Lori and I talked about this at some point, consider welding instruction partnership with a local community partner, a local community college, we've talked about that before, I think that's a great idea, I know Iowa Western is, is right there, install some cameras, which I know last time we talked, Brian said they're on order, um, that's not a surveillance technique necessarily, that's a safety compliance thing, so that the teacher has the ability to monitor a little bit to make sure that the students are, and the activities are safe. Develop that curriculum, which has been talked about more than once, I know you guys are working on that, um, Iowa Western can, is a partner there that can help you with that, get that prerequisites available here so that if they go into a certificate or a degree program, they already got their foot in the door. And the last thing, we're working on this, as, as many know, the lead times and materials and services are very extended right now, we have a Jib Boom, um, in our facility that we no longer use, it's in great shape, it was taken out of service, it's gonna have to be engineered and modified, but once we get that done, then it can be fabbed into the facility and that'll handle your sheet metal. Right now, the students are handling it by hand, it's not only dangerous, it's also very time-consuming, so Jib Boom will make that very easy to offload it, put it up on the plasma cutter and make that whole process much easier. And this is really what we want. We, we don't expect any repayment, we don't expect to be in a better position as anybody else in the community, really what we want is we want the school system to be strong, provide a setting for hands-on learning and skills, um, create awareness of skilled labor opportunities for our young people. As someone said over here, not everybody wants to go to a four-year school and that's okay, but in order to do that, we're gonna have to break that conventional image of what a trade work is, because there's a misconception right now that it's dirty, you're laying on your back in a pool of oil and sparks are falling on you, it's not true. Any, any facility that is successful will have a nice, clean, organized, well-lit, safe facility to work in. Generate and maintain a platform for our young people to showcase and explore their talents and aptitudes, that's important, especially the maintained part, because it takes effort and it takes work. Enhancement of the perception of modern learning at school, what we mean by that is, things have changed, technologies have changed, the school is here, the shop looks great, it's modern, that is a great platform on which to get kids interested in exploring learning in that setting. What we will do, we will support STEM activities, we will offer M O Cs positions, we will do plant tours at almost any time unless we have something going on, um, we will support the career day, we will, we love to do job shadowing, whether that's for an hour, a half a day, whatever, it's a great opportunity for a student to come in and see an actual application. We will provide welding coupons, I'm working on that right now, um, as you know, steel is hard to come by right now for some, so we're gonna go ahead and provide those and cut them on our laser in Omaha. And then we'll consult to, um, anything that you guys need or want or have questions about that we can answer, we're certainly not the subject matter experts on everything, but you can rely on us to give you our thoughts on certain things if you need it. And I think the last one on the right there was a good statement from Walt Disney, the only way to get started is to quit talking about it and start doing it.
What type of welding coupons are you looking for?
We're looking for two-by-four in eighth, three-sixteens and quarter hot rolled steel. We're looking for two-by-four in eighth, 3/16ths and quarter hot-rolled steel. And by the way, Josh was the one that basically did most of the work, along with Springman Electric. I didn't do, he's the one with all the brains. So our theory at Conductix is, surround your people with people much smarter than you, so that they can do the smart things.
That is really great.
Yes, thank you. I am incredibly excited about this. This has been a long time coming, and I mean, just imagine if this kind of partnership was established along with Iowa Western, with other businesses in town. I mean, I think there's no, there's no stopping us.
No.
And it's just more wonderful opportunities for our kids.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I just love the collaboration, because it took, it took the foundation, it took Conductix, it took the school, and we all collaborated and we got her done, so thank you to everybody involved.
There's been, you know, these things don't happen overnight. It's been fun to watch the infrastructure kind of come into place, watch it from the foundation standpoint, and then the dream of this kind of thing, every school district in the state would love to have something like this, and there are very few that have the capability to do anything close to what we're doing. And we've seen, Pella does a good job with theirs, and there are a few others that are doing it well, but we're in a position, a great place right now to move forward, and I am very excited about it.
Great place with Iowa Western, great place with Conductix, it's...
Well, and then we get input, and then if we need to build something new, facilities, what is...
Yeah, our facilities.
And I think the other thing about Iowa Western, I mean, we've talked about an instructor, and we can leave the welding here, you know, and we can invite other districts here, they can take welding here, and we can make another, a different program down at Iowa Western, so they have even more choice, so.
And it is, you see the space that that took to lay that out, to have those stations there. By having that up here and bringing other school districts in, you know, the space that we're moving into out of the building, then frees that up for maybe then something else, but we still have it, we still have it all going, right, right.
I just feel like it's all coming together.
Yeah. Well, this is what successful schools in the future look like.
Yes, very exciting.
Truly, hands-on.
Thank you. Well, thank you for, to all the guests, and I mean, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like to go, get your house.
You have to stay.
Yep.
You can't make a general statement like that. You get called out.
Except you.
You guys stay out.
The board has to say...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we still in the soup comments?
We're, we're...
Are we still in your...
Yeah, we're still in discussion.
I guess there was, after the Ballard game, I got some really positive feedback from a Ballard parent, so I thought it'd be worth chiming in. They just, they got into town early, swung into Westside, were kind of nervous, you know, not knowing, they'd never been to the bar. They didn't know, they didn't know like what to expect going into town as a, you know, visiting team parent, but they were just very impressed with the square, they rolled in, and they didn't get like the "what are you doing here" look, they got welcomed in and figured out that they were the out-of-town parents and got welcomed in. I don't know if they got a, bought a drink or not, but anyway, and then went to the game and were just incredibly impressed by the facilities and just the activity, and they were like, they said from the visiting side was, you know, they had to remind themselves that they were visitors and not to get too worked up into the emotion of the night and stuff, but you got the dudes with the deck behind watching, so they just, and then, you know, we just saw the news with the California team that blew the other team out like a hun, some ridiculous unsportsmanlike thing, and so they just commented that of all the teams they played this year, the sportsmanship on the field and, and, you know, not keeping the first string in the whole game was, they just had a very positive experience throughout the season, even after the loss. So just wanted to give you kudos for having a great high school sportsmanship team and the community to welcome in some outsiders on a Friday night, so.
I will piggyback on that, because I got an email that I haven't even shared with Scott or Davis yet, but just from someone who watched the game on TV and is not from Harlan, and just said, "I was very impressed with the way that your players helped the other players up, patted them on the back," and just said, "It was very nice." So he just streamed it and said how, how nice the kids were, so respectful.
Pass that on to the...
Says a lot for our programs.
Yes.
Good to get that kind of news, like that.
Very good.
Okay. Final discussion item is the new school store account. So I'm going to hand this over to Brian.
Yeah, this is pretty simple stuff. We are separating our online clearing accounts from one to two. You know, we've been using the same one for the Cyclone Corner and all the other, the lunch and everything. Cyclone Corner's usage has kind of got to the point where they really need their own. Actually, it increases our efficiency, it increases our internal control, so there's really no reason not to do it. And one other thing, we kind of enjoy the fact that they use the online part of it, because we've had, when I started here, we would get several return checks a week. We've had one slash year, one. So that's another reason to do it, but the main reason we're doing it is just to, it's kind of now with having everything in one, it's, I don't want to use the word clunky, but it makes it a little bit more difficult to reconcile, and this will just make it more efficient.
There's more checks and balances, like you said.
And the only reason we're making sure everybody knows we're doing it, just, that's...
So the account that we have to open.
So the Cyclone Corner is the store, okay? And then the other account is that, that's the lunch money?
Oh, it'd be the lunch money, registration fees, activity tickets.
And that was all bundled together?
Yeah, so that one will stay by itself, and the Cyclone Corner will be all by itself.
Makes sense. Brian, this doesn't really have anything to do with opening that new account, but what do, what do those funds, what do they use those funds for? Restocking their store, can, do they use them for their...
Actually, some of it, you go, Davis, you're going to help me out here, right? Then some of it, they use, the BPA students do most of the work.
Like national competitions?
So some of it goes to BPA, but a lot of it, there's an awful lot of it comes back to help with the athletics and/or whatever. Let's say they did it for StuCo, some will come back to StuCo, so if it's a StuCo t-shirt, some of it's going to come back to StuCo. If it's a football t-shirt, it's going to come back to athletics. So it benefits the programs that are participating.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to action items. First item under action items is the resignation of personnel. Amanda Hansen, middle high school baker, and Danielle Raid, elementary cook. Any questions on those? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of the resignation of personnel. Second by Joanie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the employment of personnel. Michaela Hamel, elementary cook, and Ashley McMillan, elementary cook. Any questions on those? And those are just filling open positions, correct? Any other questions? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of employment of personnel.
Summum.
By Joe?
Second.
Second by Monty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I have one question, Rob, like, so is our kitchen staffed, or are we still...
Catherine?
Okay.
Catherine?
No, ma'am.
Not yet.
Still looking.
Getting closer every day.
Yeah.
We're close.
Thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is termination of personnel. Mary Riley, elementary teacher associate. Do I have a motion for the approval of termination of personnel?
Summum.
By Jessica?
Second.
Second by Seth, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the additional contract days, 10 additional days for Connie
Yeah, so we're adding those days just with some additional responsibilities, and we're going to shift, currently she's in the TLC fund and really shouldn't, that's inappropriate. She should be in an at-risk fund, so we're shifting her from teacher leadership, because the role that she's playing is not really in that capacity, and moving it over to at-risk funds where she works more with students, students and intervention and pieces like that, and then we're just going to add some additional responsibilities. So those days would be five days at the end of this school year, and then next year, so there'd be five days total this year, and then 10 beginning her new contract next year.
She'd have five at the beginning, and then five at the end.
Yep. So the job description doesn't really... The job description's staying the same. It's just the funds coming in. Yeah, we need to shift the funds, and we're just looking at some additional responsibilities within the job description. Is that fair, Scott?
Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval of the additional contract days for Connie Scheckinger?
Summum.
Second.
First by Seth, second by Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the early retirement program. So the finance committee, which is Seth, Jessica, and I, met with Brian and Jenny last Thursday, and we discussed, you know, finances, our goals, projections, and early retirement, and we decided to keep the early retirement program the same as it was last year. So 55 by the time of retirement date, which is June 30th of '22. For full-time certified staff, so teachers or nurses, and they would have to have continuous service with Harlan Community School District for 10 years, and the amount would be $15,000. And we decided we'd open it up to five.
We have a, yeah.
Right.
And it's the management.
Space for five, and it comes from the management fund. Catherine's going to send out an email tomorrow to the staff, and the first that they would be able to come in is Wednesday morning, November 10th at 7:30. And then it has to be open for 21 days, and I can't remember what that cutoff is, but...
I think it's the 30th, November 30th?
November 30th, okay. By 5:00 PM.
And they have to work through the end of the school year?
And, yeah, they have to work through the end of the school year.
And we could never rehire these people back, but yet they could come back part-time sub?
Do we have any idea how many would qualify for this?
Yes.
Yeah, there were, there were several that qualified, but...
And we've had...
Not all of those have, maybe showed interest.
We've had a few email us and show interest, so that's helpful. And one of the reasons we want to do this now is so that we do know who they are and we can advertise for those positions, because some of them are a little bit more difficult to hire. There's already a teacher shortage, so we want to get, get ahead of the game if we can and post those as quickly as possible.
And it's nice to do that, so we can be out there before other people.
I might highlight, I mean, that was part of the decision-making to get to 15 and to five, was because it promotes, the earlier that we know, the quicker we can post and get into a competitive applicant pool with what's going on with our state shortage right now, so that's advantageous. Plus, there's the potential for financial savings, depending on who the vacancies replace, and it gives leadership more decision-making, time for planning on around those vacancies, too, so.
Just to clarify, too, for, to, a reminder, you know, the early retirement does come out of the management fund. Do a little teaching moment here, if it's okay. The management fund, basically, it's got very limited uses, you can, the uses are essentially for early retirement incentives, your property casualty insurance and the related deductibles, unemployment benefits, and then if there's a judgment against a district, that's really the only four things you can use it for. One of the questions that did come up was, is this in budget? Yes, it's budgeted. The fund balance is very well able to handle this, and, you know, I guess I've done enough comparisons over the last five to 10 years, that typically speaking, you're going to, it's going to save the general funds some dollars, typically speaking.
It says, I mean, I think that the plan is first come, first served.
Correct, first come, first served, and, yeah.
Logistically, how does that work? If you've got 15 people standing there, you go Wednesday morning.
Well, the first one in line is the first one to get it. This will be an experience for us, Al.
Hopefully we don't ever have to.
Ten, ten times.
We've got 10, so...
And this is, this is not a program that has to be offered every year, so future board members, it's a year-by-year decision, and how...
And the terms can offer.
The terms can change.
Or not offer, change, yeah.
Last year, the terms changed a little bit, and there was some consideration that they might change again, but when we looked at it Thursday night, we decided that this was, it was fine how it was, but this does not in any way tie your hands to next year's decision, so however, however things look at that time.
Any questions on the early retirement program? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of the early retirement program.
Summum.
By Al?
Second.
Second by Jessica, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the Green Hills AEA Board election for Director District Four ballot. So we received, I received a ballot, and it's just electing for the, our representative, is that what I would say, for the AEA?
Yep.
And the candidate is Marcus Gross, and he actually went on last year.
It was longer than last year.
He's been on a couple of years, I feel like, yeah.
Yeah. So he is re-running, I guess?
Yeah, and, I mean, the AEA has a board, monthly board meeting, just like you, because they're funded.
Yeah, the important difference, I think, just having to finish up the election. So AEA boards aren't determined by public vote, they're determined by school boards voting, so that's the, that's why there's not like an election like we had last week.
To elect a person for that, okay.
Yep, AEA boards are selected by school.
And this person comes forward and says they would be interested in filling that role, correct?
Same, yeah, same role you're having the ring process, just different, yeah, I don't think you even have to have the number of like signatures for the board nomination.
I don't think so. And different districts are weighted differently based on enrollment?
Yeah.
So our, our Director District Four consists of the following community school districts. Borior Valley, their percentage vote is 10.21, Harlan, 32.87, IKM Manning, 17.14, Missouri Valley, 20.28, West Harrison, 10.17, and Woodbine, 9.33, to make up the 100%.
Yeah, and we want to shower Gross with, Mr. Gross with accolades for stepping forward, because the process for filling a, when no one volunteers is brutal. So, nothing but encouragement, because I don't think he's, like, there's not a choice.
Well, we had to have a meeting last year.
It wasn't last, I came to the, I don't think we, how often do they, are they up?
They have a three-year rotation, so they have the same rotation.
So I'm thinking it's been a while.
When was here?
When he went on.
It's the same procedure that we do for the Director District for IASB, where we did, we did the same way in the District Director for.
I was at the meeting where we, where he came forward and said that he wanted to be part of it. I just can't remember when that was, so it's his time to re-up, I guess, so. Is everybody...
So we just check the ballot?
Everybody...
And send it in?
So do we need a motion?
Yeah, we do need a motion. So do I have a motion for the Green Hills AEA Board election for Director District Four, which would be Marcus Gross Jr.?
Summum.
Was that Seth?
Yes.
First by Seth, second by Monty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is our policy review schedule, first reading, and Joe, Jessica, and I were on to review, and I think we asked questions as we went, if we had them. Anybody else have any questions?
I would just encourage Jenny and Catherine, as you guys go forward with the comment things, even if you answer maybe the question in a phone call or, you know, whatever, if the question is asked in the comments, to answer that comment, because it's not just that person that commented that's reading it. And so, for instance, if I had the same question as Amy, but she already wrote it, I'm going to be watching for that answer, and if there's a conversation that happened with Amy off to the side, that, okay, that answers my question.
That answers my question. Don't close the question, don't close it out before you respond on the comments. Does that make sense?
Because then if, excuse me, if somebody else wants to jump in and look at it...
Right.
Then we also can see the answers.
And then we even act it until second reading is done?
Maybe, just...
Maybe.
Just because then that's when they're, you know, approved.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Just a suggestion.
I like it.
So do I have a motion for the approval of the policy review schedule, first reading for the listed policies? By Jessica?
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So next month, we will have a second reading on these policies, and will we have a first reading on new policies? So would we get three volunteers to...
Then aren't people leaving the board?
Yeah.
What policies will it be next?
Okay, so if you just click on the, no, it's okay, on the agenda, there's, right after the number seven, it says policy review schedule?
Yes.
Open that, and then...
A three-year policy review schedule?
Yeah, and then on the bottom, there are five tabs.
Yeah.
And it says year 2021 schedule.
Okay.
Click on that, the ones in red under December are the ones we're reading next month.
The November, I mean, the ones to the left are the ones we just did.
Yeah.
The tabs are on the bottom.
Okay.
And you need to go to the year scheduled before you pull them up?
Yes.
Okay. So we're doing the December, we're doing all the pinkish red names?
So it's the 100, 100 series?
Yeah, the 100 series.
That is so well ordered.
November was so much...
I love the color coordination and...
Yeah, that was amazing.
November was so much fun, I'll jump on for December.
Okay. So Joe and two more of you?
I can do that.
Thank you, Joanie.
Sure.
Thanks, Monte.
So Joe?
So this is something that will be a continuous cycle. Each month, we will have a first reading on one set of policies and a second reading. Each, they have to be...
A month apart.
You have to, you have to have a second reading to approve the policies. So, yeah, we will have a second reading next month on the ones we just approved, and then a first reading on the new set. So that'll just be a continuous cycle. Catherine's got it set up, so we review about the same number of policies each month, and we'll just do that through the three-year cycle. Which will be really nice compared to what we just did.
So just a lot of the policies each year will be...
For those of you playing the home game, we had to do all 900 in about, what, nine months?
Yeah.
That was fun.
It was a lot of, pretty intense.
So don't not do that.
Yes. This is a main job of the board to make sure that these are reviewed.
And then sometimes, if new policy or new code comes out, then we have to throw that on the new one, so then we'll throw that in there as well.
Yeah. But I, I mean, once we're on this wonderful cycle, it will be so nice. So, okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Amy, can I just give a little, to add to the financial report a little bit?
Yes, please.
The finance committee meets, we meet sporadically throughout the year, and one of the things we talk, just to remind everybody and actually let the new people know, the finance committee kind of, two or a couple of years ago, came up with, set some three major goals and one, and I'm just, I guess I'm just reminding you of those, is to maintain an unspent budget authority of, on our about $6 million, to keep the levy rate, if at all possible, around $12.30, and then I will key this one, to strive for a solvency ratio of 10 to 12%. Two weeks ago, Jenny, Ashley, and I, we intended, attended our, the training, our comprehensive financial, comprehensive financial projection model, I have to read it off the page, because it does come out very good, our workshop, and, you know, we don't have all the pieces yet, because we don't have the new valuations, which will come out every first of the year. We also don't know what the SSA allowable growth is gonna be determined by the legislature, but we use some conservative assumptions at this point, and by looking at it, we're on track with our goals based upon our preliminary numbers. Tax rates may see some decrease possibly, according to the model, and we may see a slight progression in our solvency ratio, but not that much. But essentially, this is kind of giving you a precursor. Once we get to February, we'll want to update you again. And that's probably when we'll do a little financial workshop, so we can do a little educational piece, and then we'll update of where we're at. So I just wanted to make sure everybody...
And I think in the last few years, we've gotten, I think our finance committee has made great strides in the last few years. So thank you to Brian and Jenny and...
And then he's got a great tool that helps kind of forecast things based upon SSA and enrollment and all that kind of stuff, and...
Brings it all together.
And it brings it all together, and it helps as a board member to be able to see that kind of in front of you, and...
And the finance part of it is very difficult, so.
Well, the...
Anything to, you know, tools like that.
Iowa school finance is complicated.
Yeah, it is. And what it really makes you realize is that you can do proactive things now that make a lot of difference in five years.
It makes a big difference.
Yeah, huge.
So thank you, Brian, for all of your work on that.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but I wanted to...
No, I had that on my list too.
Okay, thank you.
And just maintaining that five-year, always kind of having that projection out in your mind, always five years out, is so important.
Any questions on the consent agenda or for Brian at all? Not, I'll take a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. By Jessica?
Second.
By Monte, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is to adjourn, do I have a motion to adjourn? By Al? Second. By Joanie? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned at what time? 7:17.
Too pretty good for all that stuff.
We did.